I'll go ahead and call the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, special meeting on Friday, October 24th, 2025, to order, I just want to make a note, Commissioner Tyson is joining us virtually and he is online, as well as the commissioners that are present here in Room 564. Also, just as an admin piece, if you are on the virtual room, just ask that you stay muted, so that, unless you're called on. Also, just want to, we do have several members, several community members that are online, and want to thank them for being here today on short notice. We've got a long list of them, so I don't want to go down them, but also want to thank, in the room, we have several municipalities, leadership here, as well as community leaders, and want to thank them for, again, being here on short notice. This time, I'll go ahead and ask Vice Sherman Jones to do the invocation and pledge.
For those that can, please stand this way. Heavenly Father, we thank you, we thank you for allowing us to gather today. We ask that things be done in decency and order. We ask that we continue to unite in our community during unforeseen, challenging times. We ask that you will keep those that are safe, that our first responders, our military, all of our leaders from nonprofits to our faith-based community, as well as in government. And we ask that, again, that at this time, when we will come together, we will make logical choices and decisions that would be of the best greater benefit for all those in our community. We thank you for the wisdom and guidance and the opportunity to serve, and we ask that we will unite and leaders will come together for the greater good of our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to recognize Katie Smith from Congressman Rousers' office. She is attending virtually, and we appreciate the Congressman's office being on the line. And through this process, we've been in touch with both our federal delegation, as well as our team that works in DC on our behalf. I'm going to go ahead and move and make a few remarks to open this and then ask our county manager, again, if you are virtually, I'd ask that you mute yourself and stay muted, unless you're called on. I'll have a couple remarks, and then we'll have County Manager Greer, I'll turn it over to him, so that we can walk through a few pertinent information. So, again, good morning, and thank you, again, all for being here, and to our staff for working through a lot of this information and pulling together this meeting. The purpose of this meeting, and the reason we called it a special meeting, is that as we, as we look at what's happening at the federal level with the government shutdown, we no longer know that it's, you know, it's no longer a distant concern. It's truly a potential reality. It could affect our families here in Cumberland County. Right now, we have a responsibility, I believe, to respond with clarity, coordination, and urgency. You know, and our hope overall is that we don't have to do anything, and there will be a resolution, and I stay optimistic that we will see a resolution at the federal level. But here's what we want to accomplish today. First, we're going to hear directly from our Health Department and our Social Services about the immediate impacts they're seeing, and any updates from them specifically. These are the subject matter experts that understand the services that are being provided to so many across our community. Second, we'll discuss our coordinated response, how we're working together with community partners, faith organizations, and municipality to fill gaps and support our residents. Understand, this is just the start of the discussion. We're not walking out of here with grand plans. We believe we want to lean forward and be proactive in these coordinated response. Third, we need to ensure that we have a public communication strategy that is clear, accessible, and reaching those who need the help the most. Why this matters? Thousands of Cumberland County residents depend on federal programs that are now at risk, including our soldiers and federal employees that are working without paychecks right now. Families are making impossible choices about medicine, food, and just their everyday bills. While I know and I'm confident that Washington moves towards a solution, Cumberland County can't simply stand by and wait and watch. We must act now to ensure that we are doing the most for our most vulnerable residents. So today, we want to show what response of local government looks like. We'll coordinate, we'll communicate, and we'll make sure that no one in this community faces this crisis alone. I hope that explains the purpose of this meeting and our intent. Again, we're not walking out of here with grand plans, we're not, you know, allocating resources. This is the beginning of the coordination. This is a community, a board, and more importantly, a community leaning forward together to work towards, hopefully, something that we don't have to deal with. County Manager Greer, I'll, we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to let everyone know that county government continues to work without any interruptions, all essential services are continuing and moving forward. We've been in contact with our key stakeholders at the state level, also our association, DHHS, NACO, also in North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. All county departments are working together, ensuring that we provide information and also work through this, this, hopefully, temporary crisis. Our employees, I'd like to thank them, they're showing a remarkable dedication to continue to serve the community with pride, professionalism, and compassion and care. And we're prepared to do what we need necessary to keep the community and the residents steady. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Green, our Public Health Director, to provide an update on our WIC program, and then she'll be followed by Brenda Jackson, our Service, Social Services Director, and she'll provide information on SNAP. Again, I'd like to say one caveat on everything, this is a very fluid situation. We get updated information on a minute by minute, hour by hour, on a daily basis. And so, as soon as we have the information, we'll make sure that the community is fully aware of the status of the government shutdown and the impacts that it will have to county government and residents. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Green.
And Dr. Green, before we move to that piece, just want to, commissioners, if you have any brief remarks before Dr. Green begins her portion, Vice Sherman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that it is a pleasure to see all of our community leaders here today. I see individuals from the JCPC committees, I also see several individuals that work throughout our nonprofits, as we know they do have boots on ground. And I would like to say that it's also a pleasure to service the liaison on the Social Service Board, as well as the Public Health Board. I've been receiving many calls, as I'm sure other commissioners, in regards to concerns about what may or may not happen on that date of November 1st, because of that of, you know, decisions being made on the legislative level from the state, as well as the government. So I do want you all to be assured, as we are here today, as a united team, we take these matters very serious, and we are planning on moving forward to work together. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Sherman. Commissioners, anyone else? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to item four, Dr. Green. And again, Dr. Green, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Still the morning.
Feels like afternoon.
It feels like the afternoon. The Cumberland County Department of Public Health operates our local WIC program. Currently, our WIC program serves more than 12,000 participants, women, infants, and children that are receiving WIC benefits. These WIC benefits include supplemental food, breastfeeding support, nutrition education, referrals to community partners, many of you that are in the room and listening online. More than $11.2 million of WIC benefits have been spent in our local grocery stores and with other vendors. We've been working closely with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and we've been informed that funding has been secured for both food and administrative support into the month of November. Assuming the redemption levels for those WIC benefits remain stable, and with ongoing incremental funding, WIC can operate through November the 15th. Additional funding or alternate funding from federal sources or other sources would be needed for benefits beyond that time if the shutdown continues. Our State Health Department continues to work closely with the USDA to secure those funding resources. Our local WIC office remains operational for business. That includes all four of our WIC locations, our location on Faint Ramsey Street here in Fayetteville, our Hope Mills location, our Spring Lake location, and our Fort Bragg location. All of our WIC families are encouraged to continue to use their benefits as normal and as usual this month. Our local WIC staff and our State Department staff will communicate with our WIC participants directly if funding should change, or the shutdown or operations changed due to the shutdown. We will also communicate directly with our WIC vendors that provide those foods. Our WIC participants should maintain their regularly scheduled appointments, and if you are a new eligible WIC participant, you can continue to enroll at any of our four locations. Our team stands poised and ready to support you and support all of our families. And I want to give two numbers for folks to call if they are, if you're listening online or a partner that's going to refer folks to resources. Our information line, that's our line for general information for the public, that is 910-433-3610. And then if you need to make an appointment or change your appointment, that is at 910-433-3730. We appreciate the support of our county commissioners and our county management team, and I'll turn it over to Director of Social Services, Brenda Jackson, at this time.
Good morning, Commissioners and all that are present today, and we certainly appreciate that support. Thank you, Dr. Green, for that gracious transition. I'm Brenda Jackson, Director of Cumberland County Department of Social Services, and we administer the SNAP program. In North Carolina, that program is called the Food and Nutritional Program. The state and feds like to give programs different names, but it's the same program, Food and Nutrition and SNAP. At Cumberland County Department of Social Services, we currently serve more than 33,000 households receiving food and nutrition, or what is called the federal, at the federal level, the SNAP program. While October benefits have been distributed, we have been informed by USDA through the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services that November benefits may be delayed or disrupted if the federal shutdown continues. We are in close contact with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, as well as our various associations, our DSS Directors Association, and our federal associations that support advocacy around this issue. We will also provide updates and guidance as is released to us by the USDA. We are encouraging families to remember a few things. Remember, any unspent SNAP benefits that are on their EBT card can carry over month to month, and is accessible for use at any time. We encourage citizens and families to conserve benefits where possible and purchase chef-stable foods, things that will last, rice, macaroni, those kinds of things, beans, though, and it's the fall, so it's a good time to make chili, or a good pot of soup. Check unspent SNAP benefits by going to ebteedge.com or using the EBT Edge app, as well as the numbers and all the contact information is on the back of citizens' cards. We also encourage citizens to continue to apply for benefits. They can apply online at epass.northcarolina.gov, or we certainly welcome them at our main office at 1225 Ramsey Street. Our team is also working with community partners, operating food banks, providing community meals, and conducting outreach across the county. We want residents to know, similar to public health, that we are open, operating, continue to meet all of their appointment requirements, and definitely come to our main office at 1225 and apply for benefits that they needed, as well as they can apply, again, online at epass.nc.gov. We stand ready to serve.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to, I'm going to tag Team Y'all, transitioned so well together, such a seamless transition. I'm going to, Commissioners, if you have questions for DSS and Department of Health, if I get Dr. Green and Director Jackson, if you'll just come back to the podium, sorry, Dr. Jackson, I'm just making you walk a little bit. We'll go ahead and entertain questions or comments from the Commissioners. Vice Sherman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first question is, well, actually, it's a comment for you to elaborate, to explain, Dr. Green, when you were speaking of WIC, can you just briefly explain, since you said there was $11.2 million, can you explain to our listening audience, as well as those here, how much fundings it takes of that for fundings weekly to run the WIC program? Thank you.
So that $11.2 million, our WIC beneficiaries receive a food package, and that food package is going to vary every month and by WIC participants, so yogurt, bread, cheese, those nutritional foods that they need for their infant, or for our pregnant women, our postpartum women, and so that $11.2 is what gets redeemed in, for example, your local grocery store. So across all of our vendors, that's the value of all of those WIC packages that are redeemed, so that's investments into the economic impact of our community. The, we have a WIC, an annual WIC budget of about $3.2 million that we, that we have locally, that's our federal and local WIC dollars that helps to support our staff. So those, those food dollars come directly from the USDA, and then the other dollars that are in our budget, about $3.2 million, that's our budget to administer the program. So our breastfeeding peer counselors, our processing assistants, our nutritionists that are on staff, that takes to run the program on an annual basis.
And just one more follow-up. So basically, weekly, the part that would go towards the services, I guess that's what I'm getting at, what would the impact, the money-wise, what would the impact look like for like November? Is it like 10 million, or what have they already slated to say you all know that you will have for the month of November, and what is the concern as far as the amount? That's the questions I'm getting, like, from the community that you would be in the negative of, I guess you could say.
Can you ask your question, though? You're asking about how, how many dollars do we need to run the WIC program?
Absolutely, exactly.
Approximately a million dollars a month.
Thank you.
Does that answer the question that you're looking for?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And so with this effect, does it look like we would not be getting that amount of money, or that's what I'm getting at?
So that's, that's going to depend on the federal shutdown. So as of now, the, what we have from the USDA and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, they have funds to operate through November the 15th, and then after that, we'll have to work with our county management team to understand what that local impact is going to look like to continue to administer that program.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one question for Director Jackson. Go ahead, follow. Thank you. And Director Jackson, my question for you is, can you please name the core locations that individuals can still come in to apply for if they're in need of the food SNAP benefits? And another question, is it going to be on the website in regards to you all are doing collaborations for that of where individuals can go to find meals, or how can they find that type of schedule?
So, individuals can apply in our main building at 1225 Ramsey Street, but if transportation is a challenge, they can also apply through EPAS online. Also on our county website is the email address for food and nutrition benefits, where they can also email their benefits. And so there's, all that is notated on our county website, all of that information, as well as the state website, where they can get that information. So we don't, if citizens have a transportation challenge, there are other ways to apply. There are also, public library has kiosks and computers and things like that, that citizens can apply. So there are several mechanisms throughout our community in which they can apply.
Thank you. So that's what I was getting at, I guess the kiosks, I wasn't sure if those were still available when you said core locations, I just wanted individuals to know the actual places, so that libraries do still have the kiosks. And then the last thing would be, in regards to you all have collaboration, you were stating with other agencies for foods, I guess, you know, meals, that individuals can go and partake in, can you elaborate about some of that?
So, Dr. Green and I have collaborated extensively. Last Thursday, we had an online meeting with all of our community stakeholders. We maintained a community stakeholders list, we invited all of those organizations and had a, are having weekly online discussions with them about the services and letting them know, so that they can prepare a lot of our community resources, like our various food banks operated by churches and community organizations that support food. So we've already started having those discussions with those community partners, and we started last Thursday with our first meeting, once we found out that November benefits may be impacted.
Thank you. And then will there be somewhere on the website, so say if a citizen needs to know where they could go on a Friday or Thursday? I know that's going to take time, this is our first meeting, but is that going to be a part of the plan?
We appreciate the support of our Public Information Office, and they have been, have provided a website as well with that information. We also strongly, strongly encourage citizens to call North Carolina 211. It operates 24 hours, seven days a week, and they have all of the listings for all of the community partners in each county. So that even if, we have a listening audience, if they live in Robertson County or Sampson County, they can call North Carolina 211, and it'll have all the information about food services in Cumberland County and other counties, and they operate 24 hours, seven days a week.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Commissioners, Commissioner Adams.
Ms. Jackson, I just got a couple of questions. One, I know you talked about SNAP, but is it potentially that child subsidy could be interrupted also if we?
Thus far, the information that we're getting from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, at least through November, that child care subsidy and some of our other programs, right now, we haven't received any notification that they're going to be impacted, as of now.
Are there any other programs besides the SNAP that we kind of looking at, that people need to be aware of, that could have that potential?
So when we look at the federal services, we look at the Energy Assistance Program, we did receive notice that that, that program will, the low-income energy assistance program in particular, as it stands right now, the information we've received is that individuals who received it last year will get an automatic payment to their utilities provider. That program for 60 and above, that program doesn't start until December 1st, so we're still in the waiting game for that program. So those are, those are work first programs, those, all those eligible, TANF is work first, all of those programs. We haven't heard anything about those programs. So far, they are scheduled to move forward as we know it today.
Okay. I just, you know, we talked about SNAP in particular, I just need, people just need to know what they need to prepare for, all the way down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams, and this is a good question, and just to, just want to reiterate that point, so what we're seeing, where the, where we're going to see cuts, WIC, SNAP.
Those are the items that we, those are the programs that we have received official notice, that can be delayed or disrupted.
And that's part of, part of this meeting, is I want to make sure we're communicating what is happening, and we have credible source of information on what's happening, because I know to Commissioner Adams' point, there was talk around TANF, what would happen there, as well as some other child subsidy side, so that's, it's an important message. Other Commissioners, and then we'll go back to Vice Sherman Jones, Vice Sherman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Dr. Green, the WIC program, that's state-funded, not federally funded, is that not correct? I want to make sure our community understands that, where those fundings are coming from, is that not correct?
That's a, it's a federally funded program through USDA, and then that, those dollars go to the state and then come to locals for implementation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Commissioner Jones, this is the same for SNAP as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Patel.
Director Jackson, I have a quick question. Concerning the, just the food banks and all of our partners that are working on that, what's the easiest way for the community to find out resources if they need them? Would that be 211 or the PIO department?
We have that information for Cumberland County also on our website, and we're updating and working with our PIO. and working with our PIO, but we strongly encourage North Carolina 211, it's just the easiest.
And just as a point, I'm gonna have Scott Embry from United Way come up and talk about 211 following this, so that we get that awareness. Commissioner Adams.
Just for Commissioner Patel, they can also go on Action Pathways' website, which lists all of the food banks, I mean, the food resources, the church, they have it on their website, so you can go to Action Pathways. They run Second Harvest Food Bank, and all of that information will be there for the public also, so that's another resource.
Commissioners, other questions for Director Jackson or Dr. Green before we move forward, and then we'll have some further discussions. We may need y'all to come back up, if we've got some other conversation, other questions. Commissioner Tyson, did you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry I'm not there live today, I've got a little bit of a head cold, but I just wanted to thank Director Jackson and Dr. Green for their update. I was gonna ask Medicaid specifically, Dr. Green, can you speak to what effect we may have locally on that, if any?
So, I might start and then turn that over to Director Jackson as well. So, our, the part that we are working with our state partners on is the Medicaid rebase funding. That is funding that is going to impact the fees for Medicaid. Right now, we're not impact, any, making any rate changes to our programs and services at the Health Department. We still, in the state of North Carolina, there's not sufficient funding for Medicaid rebase, but we are still working to understand what the impact is gonna be. If there's no changes at the state level, then that will, those rate fees are in, those cuts to the rate fees are in a pack, in effect now, as of October 1st, and expected to be implemented November the 1st, unless there's a change at the state level. And so, we are still monitoring closely, but not have made, not have made any changes to our rate fees at the local Health Department.
And on the social services side, we administer the Medicaid program, just the service part of the program. We have received no word from the Center for Medicare and Medicaid, which is a federal agency regarding any impacts of the federal shutdown on Medicaid. What Dr. Green is referencing is around the provider rate change, and that is done at the state level through North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and the Division of Health Benefits. At the local level, we do not administer or control any rate, rate matters.
Vice Sherman Jones, your reference.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is for you, Dr. Green. In the event that if there are some changes for Medicaid and individuals, personal primary doctors aren't able to then accept their Medicaid for various reasons, will there be an action plan put in place for the Health Department to perhaps work with those individuals that, sliding scale, or work with individuals that, whose providers may or may not be able to provide assistance if there are changes to their Medicaid?
So, we see all of our patients at the Health Department in many of our different programs, maternity andizations, with a variety of sources, so local, state, federal funding, and those services are often provided, as you noted, on a sliding fee scale. So, for those that have an inability to pay, then we would apply those charges on a sliding fee scale, and of course, we invite patients to make appointments with us at the Health Department, and we would love to be their, you know, primary care provider for our children, and then we also collaborate with Demond Wade and Cumberland Health Net for Adult Primary Care Services as well.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else before I move forward? Commissioner, I have to reference.
Well, and this is just a comment, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you did this meeting today, because I think we just want to make sure, especially with the Health Department and Social Services, for people to call to get the correct information. Social media puts out everything, and so, I think it's incumbent, and with our website, and with the numbers you all gave, and I hope we can post those numbers for people to call to get the correct information, because I'm gonna just tell you, bad information is worse than having no information, and social media is just running rampant with things that aren't really relevant, and we don't know yet. So, I think it's important. Thank you all so much for doing that. Thank you for the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams, and that's exactly the point. We wanna make sure we're providing a credible source of information at this meeting, where all our partners are here, all the municipalities, us as a community, and our PIO will cover some of those towards the end of this meeting, to make sure we're focusing people to the, those credible sources that you mentioned, Commissioner Adams, as well, so thank you. Anything else for Director Jackson and Dr. Green right now? If not, thank you both, we'll probably call you back up. We got some questions, we talked resources. I'd like to ask Mr. Scott Embry from United Way to come up and talk about NC 211.
Good morning, Commissioners and community leaders. My name is Scott Embry, and I'm the Executive Director of the United Way of Cumberland County, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the group today. The United Way, along with the nonprofit community here, I mean, we're designed to be sure that there, that people have access to resources and information when they need it the most. And 211 is an excellent resource here locally. It is an information and referral service that's provided by the state of North Carolina, but it's powered by the local United Ways in each county. It gives families and individuals an opportunity to call 211, or visit our website at nc211.org to get free and confidential information on health and human services within this community. I will tell you that 211, the what's so powerful about it is most, every organization you guys have mentioned here this morning is on 211 already, from Second Harvest to a lot of the church community here in Fayetteville. The best thing about it is, goes to what Commissioner Adams referred to, this is a comprehensive list of vetted organizations that we trust deliver and execute plans at the ground level here in Cumberland County, and, you know, it makes a big difference when someone calls, if you're getting to someone that can really offer some help. The knowledgeable and well-trained staff are tremendous. You should just know, last year, well, really this year, we have answered over 10,000 calls for help in Cumberland County. People looking for resources, whether it's food, utilities, housing, healthcare, transportation, legal services, disaster assistance, caregiving services, digital connectivity, employment services, it's a really a large network of help, is what I would tell you, and this staff has answered a lot of calls. You also might be curious to know that we recognize there's a lot of hurting going on in our community today. Answering 10,300 calls is up over 2,000 calls from last year. So, there is a growing need in our community. The United Way and our agency partners have been looking at this since the beginning of the year, wondering if something like this might be happening, and we are here and ready to serve in the capacity in which we're called upon. Just wanted to put that out there, I did bring some flyers that are updated, they are English on one side, Spanish on the other, with all that information. I believe we are gonna strategically place those in areas across our community to be sure that that information is more widely available, so that people looking for help have a place to go and find that help.
Commissioners, questions for 211, or comments around 211, and again, Mr. Embry, we appreciate you being here. I think it's important that we have this central resource that is so well-connected and credible in our community. Commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner, I have to comment there.
Comment for 211?
No.
Okay. So, a couple of questions, Mr. Embry, if, if there's a community partner that may not be connected to 211, they may be new, or they wanna get connected to 211, how do they do that?
Yeah.
We have a lot of community partners online.
Exactly. And it is an open database, so they can go on nc211.org, add their agency. Within seven days, they will complete the vetting process and be added to the website at that point in time. So, it's a short vetting process, but it is a very important part of that.
And you, you gave a laundry list of items, connection back to mental health components as well?
Yes. They are trained to handle people that are in despair, even as far as suicidal counseling and getting people to the right connections, you know, if they have no hope. So, they are a well-trained staff that is able to answer calls and deliver service.
And multilingual as well.
That's exactly right.
Commissioners, other questions for Mr. Embry around 211, North Carolina 211? Again, can you give the numbers, it's pretty simple, 211, but the website?
nc211.org. It's free, it's confidential, and, you know, it is accessible.
Thank you, Mr. Embry, and we may bring you back up for some additional questions.
Thank you.
Before we move forward, I know we got a couple of comments from some commissioners. I wanna recognize Katie Smith from Congressman Rousers' office. Ms. Smith, are you, are you there? You can unmute yourself, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
We have you.
Yes. Thank you for putting this meeting together and allowing me to be a part of it. Congressman Rousers' office is still open, and we are tracking the various federal programs in regards to funding. If there are constituents that you know that are having issues with federal agencies, we are still able to put in inquiries, it's just a matter of if we get a response back. I have been able to get in touch with the USDA, for instance, in regards to foreclosures. So, if you know of somebody, or you can contact me directly, but our office numbers are on the Congressman's website, and please feel free to let us know if there's any issues that folks have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate the continued dialogue that we've had through this entire process with you and the Congressman's office. At this time, I'll go ahead, and then we got a couple of comments from commissioners, and then we'll move to our next item. Vice Sherman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I do wanna say that I really appreciate that we are talking about 911, collaboration and partnership, which is important, but it would be irresponsible to, as a mental health professional, to state that we must, no doubt, times of crises when we're talking about, you know, food, utilities, housing, healthcare impacted, sometimes people don't even wanna get those type of resources, so let's also be mindful that there is the 988. If you feel really stressed out, or to the level you might harm yourself, 988 is the number, call 988 Suicide in Crisis Hotline, of which the North Carolina Department of Human Health Services would definitely want you to contact. Again, 988, if you feel overwhelmed, Suicide Crisis Hotline, they also have a 24-hour emergency number, if you know that you're going through, you can detect signs of serious challenges and maybe not thinking that of rationally, 866-903-3787, North Carolina Mental Health 24-hour hotline, 866-903-3787, because we know during challenges, individuals can sometimes either have a setback, or that of depression, and so, 988 will be specifically there to handle those needs. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, somebody just texted me, and I just asked for some clarification, so that we have this information correct, and this is to Ms. Jackson. The question I got was that you couldn't apply for SNAP online, only in person, or if you, if you apply online, you have to come into the office? Can you just kinda clear that up, so we can have that information?
So, citizens can, can apply online at epass.nc.gov. However, the program does require a face-to-face visit at some point during the interview process, but the application can be submitted, it doesn't have to be done immediately, and staff will work with that individual regarding the face-to-face interview that is required.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
No, that was just a question somebody sent in.
All right. We'll go ahead and move forward, just very briefly, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tyson, did you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Just a brief discussion around resources, and again, understanding at this point, this is really about coordination, so I know we have a lot of partners online, I just wanna make sure they're plugged in, into 211 as we start this process. If we have to go to this process and we see these cuts actually happen, there's gonna be some additional coordination points. So, as we look at, you know, food access, as we look at mental health, as we look at transportation, as we look at, you know, just shelters in general, I know there's been some comments around shelters. We, the purpose of this and the ongoing discussions that have happened over the last couple of weeks is to allow us to lean forward. So, again, we're not walking out of here with every plan, we're not gonna say we're standing up a shelter on this day, we're doing that, but what we're doing is we're having those conversations. Our emergency management team is talking to, you know, their peers, and we're looking at what our options are for that. We're talking with churches about, you know, if we get food distribution points and they get set up, how the church is gonna plug in from a transportation, or getting that food out, but working with our different agencies, how we can help make sure our food pantries continue to stay stocked. I mean, these are the things that we'll work through as we move forward and as plans become necessary at that point. You know, we know there's things around all of these areas that we will continue to work through. Again, the point of what we are looking to do today is, one, put the credible information out, so it's very clear, you heard from the experts that are at the tip of the spear on the information, I think that's such an important point from today, but also knowing where to go to get the resources. Call 211, call the other numbers that you've seen, our website, Cumberland County, nc.gov will have a resource page, it'll be front and center with all this information, and our PIO, Diana Rice, will talk about, a little bit about that in just a couple of minutes. But commissioners, any, any items around resources that you wanted to bring up, that we need to make sure that our team or staff are looking at, or potentially with people we have online? Yes, we're connected, just as a point of reference, we're connected with Fort Bragg, we know that our soldiers and families right now, we're connected with them, as well as on the veteran's side, and those are some of the partners that are on the call, along with, you know, from a Partnership for Children, when you look at childcare and those types of things. But questions around resources that we, we can either ask partners that are here, or that we can make sure our staff, we're thinking through them. Vice Sherem Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, I'm just delighted to see everyone here today, it shows our concern, collaboration. I also serve on the JCPC, which is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. I think it's important during crisis times that we are reminded to break stigmas, just like stigmas that we have for mental health. JCPC has a lot of resources, we do have the Public Awareness Chair, Mr. Davis, here today, and again, it's important, because when you hear juvenile crime prevention, know it doesn't mean that everyone's out here committing crime, it means actually just the opposite, prevention. And so, during crisis times, as we're aware, if we're gonna be supportive of families, that's why I'm glad to see a lot of boots-on-ground, nonprofit workers, you all know more than we do, you are all the ones that are going into these neighborhoods that many people don't wanna go into, so I'll be the one to address the elephant in the room. In crises, when you have to worry about your benefits being cut, in crises, when you don't know if you can pay your rent, appreciate nonprofit leaders, I see several of you here. So, with that being said, I wanted to throw that out there, speaking, you know, being on the JCPC Liaison Committee and having IC members here, because we understand that youth will have a tendency, you know, behaviors act up, and that's only natural if you're stressing your family, your family's making less, we're gonna have real conversations, we're gonna have them, and when your family's in, you know, poverty, and, and we're a tier one, you know, so I want everyone to be encouraged to know that, the JCPC, please visit their website, ask members that you might know in the community, because as soon as you hear juvenile crime prevention, there's a negative, and we need to break that stigma, we really do. That's why it says "prevention program," just as when people hear mental health, you know, a lot of times, it's like a shock reaction, or not the right education, so we're here to speak about resources, so I wanted to make sure, to be mindful that, be encouraged, anyone out here, if your children might be off task, we all have different family dynamics, that is what that resource is here, very positive and productive seminars that Juvenile Assessment Center offers, and again, if we don't break stigma, that's our responsibility. So, I would just encourage individuals, JCPC, look for yourself, look at the website, don't let the word "crime" make you feel that these are youth, they're very intelligent, sometimes we all get off course, they just need guidance and direction, so if we're gonna speak about guidance and direction and resources, and most certainly during times of, you know, challenges with families, so I just want everyone to know that, that... that, that it's a positive resource, prevention means just that, we want to detour you from getting or escalating deeper into the system, and even if you do get in the system, we're all about second chances here, as we all have sometimes not made wise decisions.
There, sir, we're not recognized in the public right now, sir.
And there is a link, because there's a lot of nonprofits that work affiliated with the JCPC, and so I wanted to make sure that people look at that website, and you'll see all the list of all the nonprofits that can benefit, a lot of mentorships, the director is Courtney McCombe, she's not here today, but just know that, don't feel nervous, you're stressed, you're working two or three jobs, speaking to families that might be in that situation, that this will impact the most, you do have support from the JCPC. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any other questions around resources, or questions back to the staff on things to make sure we're, we are thinking through and looking at? Commissioner Tyson, anything from you online?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A couple of questions, I know we've worked through it, but just so the public is aware of some of the coordination, when we look at, you know, as things begin to move forward, there's also the animal services side, just identifying the capacity there and what's going to happen with pets as, you know, things, as well as feeding of those pets and other things. I know we've talked through a lot of things, we want to make sure that part is also thought through. And then the use of our libraries, I know our libraries have, over time, we have a plan for warming, as well as white flag. I know we're working to bring on additional white flag providers, so as we're moving into the winter season, not only on the white flag, but from a public safety side, you know, our partners amplifying the message around heat your home the right way, so we don't have fires in homes as well, so I know that the public safety side is going to be amplifying those messages is important as well. And then as we begin to look at transportation, we know that transportation, as we heard from Dr. Green, as well as Director Jackson, and even some of the Commissioners around transportation, we'll continue to look at opportunities for that, and conversations with the city around fast and what happens during those times as well. So those are some of the points that we just want to make sure, I know the staff is working through, but I want to make sure that our partners know that we're working through. I would ask that there's partners on the call, plug back in to your counterpart at the county, if there's something, if you have a shortage, or you're seeing a trend, or you're seeing a gap, so we can continue these conversations and make sure, if we get to a point where we have to begin to execute some of this, that we are not reacting, that we're being proactive. County Manager Greer, any other items from a resource standpoint, or from a county preparedness?
Not at this time, Chairman.
All right, I'd like to go ahead and ask our Cumberland County PIO, Diane Rice, just to come up and briefly talk about our information flow.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have created a webpage, or landing page, CumberlandCountyNC.gov/resources, and as people have been sending resources into us, we've been continually updating that page. There are also some FAQs, just based on kind of the social media traffic and questions and comments we've been seeing, we've created a list of FAQs, things like, what is a government shutdown? How does this impact me? I'm in the military, am I going to get paid? So we're trying to pull that information, both, we've been receiving updates from Ms. Phillips, who is in contact with Ron Hamm, our lobbyist, so as soon as he sends information, if an update needs to happen, our team has been making that to that webpage. We also are working in coordination with the United Way to make sure that we get the 211 information into kind of our frequently visited locations, so that'll be library, bus areas, the day resource center, anywhere we need to, where we anticipate there might be frequent visits, we'll ensure that that information is delivered, and we're providing accurate resources to our community. After this meeting today, and pending any direction from the Board and from the County Manager, we will also push resources to our social media pages, and we've been talking through all of our plans with the County Manager pretty frequently. I've met with my counterparts and our public safety teams, as well as Mr. Cumberland here, and our own emergency management department, to be sure that we are giving as much information about safety as we can, so from mental health, safety, to just making sure that you're not using the wrong kind of heater in your house, we'll be pushing those messages as well.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Rice? Vice Chairman Jones, direct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Rice. I do have a question in regards, will we be able to discuss with you all, communications team, perhaps adding a link, I know we're updating our website as is, for some of these resources that we've been discussing, to make it more user-friendly and accessible for our community that it's really in need?
Sure.
Can we have a conversation about that, definitely offline, not right now, though?
Yes, absolutely, and if it helps, there's a yellow banner on our homepage, so if people can't remember the exact link, as long as they're going to our webpage, there's a big yellow banner at the top that says "Government Shutdown FAQs and Resources," so hopefully that'll help people really easily get to that landing page.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that to their attention, look for the yellow banner.
Yes.
We're always looking for small shortcuts in times of challenges, we want to make it as user-friendly and easy for those that are delegating and balancing out challenges, and we appreciate the work that our PO team does. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Rice? Thank you, Ms. Rice, and thanks for all the work you're doing, and your team as well on the coordination point. I do just want to make sure, recognize, and we've continued conversations with them, our school board chairwoman is here, Chairwoman Jones is here, as well as our vice chairwoman is here as well, we appreciate them both being here in person, I know Dr. Bracy is online as well, and we're continuing those coordinations, as we know, our schools will be impacted as well with families and just the situation that potentially could happen. I'm not sure if Dr. Bracy wanted to add anything, I know he's on the line. If you want to, you can unmute Dr. Bracy. If not, we'll go ahead and move forward. Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward. Commissioners, any final, any additional comments you'd like to add? All right, again, I just, again, I want to thank our partners for coming together on a short notice, you know, I want to reiterate the point of this meeting. The point is to ensure that you're getting credible information from the information, the people that have the direct information from the federal government, so you're hearing directly from the people that have the latest and greatest facts. That's extremely important. The other point that I want to make sure is, this is about not walking down here with some kind of disaster plan or grand plan, this is about us leaning forward as a community, seeing the collaboration that's already happening, but also beginning to keep those lines of communication open as we move forward. My sincere hope is that we never have to do anything, and there'll be a resolution at the federal level, because we know it will impact our community greatly. I just saw Dr. Bracy come on, so I will defer to him if he wants to speak. But, you know, the point of this is to continue those conversations as we move forward, reminding people that those central points of information. Cumberland County Gov, CumberlandCountyNC.gov resource page, call 211, of course, can always call 911, and you have the 988, as well as the other resources we provided. I'll check one more time with Dr. Bracy, I saw him come on, if he's able, if he wanted to make a comment before we adjourn.
Hey, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, all leaders there, sitting here with Mr. Tolan. We're just happy to be a part of this community, and we're happy to support in any way that we can. We stand here as a partner as well.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy, we appreciate you being here, and your chair and vice chair here, I know that we stand shoulder to shoulder when it comes to situations like this, so thank you so much.
And we look forward to working hand in hand with all partners.
Dr. Bracy, if you want, I think we've got a question from our vice chairman for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Bracy, as we appreciate working together in partnership, and for the listening, listeners and those here, I'm a big advocate for the youth, as I'm sure many of us are, so that you can put the parents at ease, can you just elaborate briefly on that of, again, as we know, when it comes to food, utilities, housing, healthcare, that definitely impacts our youth, so can you just elaborate one or two things that the school system will be doing, whether it's with your social workers or what you already do, to bring some type of comfort and assurance to our parents in regards to when the youth are impacted by the changes that happen in their household? How can they be assured, or can you just elaborate on some things that they can be assured that will happen daily when their children go to school? Thank you so much.
Yeah, we have social workers that serve all of our schools, any parents that are concerned about lunches and what that'll look like, all of our students will eat lunch every day, they'll eat what all the other kids are eating, as well, whether they have money on their accounts or not. Many of our schools are CEP, Community Eligibility Provision, and they eat free anyway, but those that are not, and that are impacted, they will still get a free meal.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy.
Yes, sir, I was just going to say again, Mr. Chair, if anybody needs to talk to a counselor or social worker, we certainly have plenty of those ready to stand by.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy, and again, thank you for you and your chair and vice chair for being here today. Commissioners, anything else that we need to discuss? Vice Chairman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add the importance, because of course, no doubt, resources aren't even given, we don't have them out, so I want to, I want to thank the Chairman for calling this meeting of importance and his great leadership, but I did just want to make note that, because we do have them, we thank you, United Way, resource is important, I encourage everyone that's here to take a few of these with you, make sure you share them with your organization, the best way for us to teamwork, makes the dream work, to get the word out, is to utilize these resources, so we want to thank you for bringing packets, and I hope that all of you that are in the audience will take some of these back to your organization, push them out to our community. That's all I had to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much.
Again, thank you to our partners for being here today on short notice, we appreciate it. At the conclusion of this meeting, we're going to move downstairs to do a press conference so the press can be able to interact with us. The reason why we're moving is because it's, the downstairs facilitate is a better room from a technology standpoint, and so we thought it's best to do it down there. So we'll be moving down there directly after that, and you can take direction from Ms. Rice downstairs. Hearing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moving, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion on table to adjourn, is it properly seconded? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
He is.
We're adjourned.